For some people prizes for some people. But they really kind of help communicate some more detailed information to families that they have questions about that. So they've done great.
I appreciate that. I know when our kids were in class, there were several students of, you know, friends of theirs that didn't even know how to do it or why to do it. And so I appreciate the work we're doing as well to assist our campus.
Are we still the student?
For the alternative for even like it's twenty-one.
Can you see continued in.
So a lot of it is not necessarily elected by the things. It's more of a, hey, we have this offering. So it's been a, you know, instead of maybe pursuing, you know, a charter or fully online program outside of our district, we need to keep them entertained. But often it's offered as a, you know, instead of me and, you know, we're really pushing and a lot of support to make sure students are passing. So we don't, it's not something I necessarily aspire to, but it is there for the students.
Thanks for, thanks for your work.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
At this point, we will go through recognition of visitors and bringing us people present. Is there anyone in favor? Principals, if you want to grab a seat here, you're free to sit down. Okay. And now we will be going to the consent agenda. And we have the proposal for the consent agenda items. Do you have a motion to approve? Second. Andrew, I'm considering making any, uh, any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And now we will go to the regular action agenda and I will turn that over to Dr. Van.
So we'll start with our bittersweet, our retirement. So I'll throw Mrs. Hennas on to kick us off. At some point we'll need a motion, but I'm not sure we're in good.
Yes, this is always such a fun thing to hear about some of the things that people have done that you might not know about, but also very bittersweet. Although Mrs. Hennas and I were joking around that they get to retire no matter what you say. So one, I'm gonna let the principals really talk specifically about their retirees from their building, but I, I just wanted to share within this retiring group today, we have three of the top five senior, senior teachers. And in fact, the most senior teacher, the song Living on Agrar by Jon Bon Jovi was the number one song in nineteen ninety-seven when they started. I just feel like that's a perfect, like, intro walk-up song for them. So, and here it is. Okay. So I am going to introduce Mr. Creep from Baldwin, even though I told Mr. Mirza that our was first in half of it. It's not. So, um, uh, Mr. Creep from Baldwin will start with retirees from Baldwin and then Mr. Mirza will come and so on and so forth.
This is, this is always a tough time of year for us, especially at Baldwin. We have so many people that have poured into our kids and our community for many, many, many years. So I'm gonna start with Ms. Amy Fester, who is with us this evening and her parents. Thank you for being here. Amy has taught for thirty-two years in Hudsonville Public Schools. Right?
How about?
Yeah. Okay, I gotta look like, I don't know. Anyways, start as taught in multiple different buildings. Taught multiple different subjects. Just poured into our Spanish curriculum. I'm sorry, my notes are all over the place. Let me get back to them. Um, Amy's taught Spanish for us, German, current events, uh, reading, computers, health, pretty much anything that we needed someone to teach, Amy would teach it. Poured into our kids, uh, and I've been, had the privilege of working with Amy for the last four years. Um, we've had our, our trials and tribulations along the way, uh, but shows up every day with a heart of gold. And that impact will live on forever with our culture, with our kids. Um, and we're just so grateful for all that you've given to Baldwin and to Hudsonville Public Schools. So thank you so much. Mr. Scott St. Antoine is our other retiree. He is not able to be here with us. For those of you that know Scott, he is a coach and he's a teacher first, but a coach. And he's currently coaching his high school team right now in baseball. So he is unable to be here, but um, Scott has been here for thirty years, all thirty years at the middle school. Uh, his first year, actually, he told me, um, was the old building. I don't know what that means. I haven't been here that long. Uh, but he started his first year in the old building and then has taught all twenty-nine other years at BMS. So he was there when the building opened and um, guy that poured in, uh, so many hours outside of the classroom, um, he coached everything. He was coaching up until last year, uh, middle school basketball. Um, he's coached baseball at the high school. He's coached wrestling, you name it. He's involved. Um, Scott has poured into the social studies and history department and, um, truly is gonna be missed uh, by many. The, the one lasting legacy that I think Scott brought to our eighth graders in particular, uh, those of you that have had an eighth grader in Hudsonville Public Schools, they do a, a time capsule project. Um, and that is always something that, uh, those of us that have worked at the high school when they're seniors, they're like, where is my time capsule? And a lot of times he still has them in his cabinet. Um, so just something that he is, has brought to our school culture that is gonna live on beyond, beyond his years and just super excited for him and his family as he enjoys returning. So that is it for me. Thank you.
Great. I think Pat, if you pull the fire alarm, this doesn't have to go down and we don't have to retire Tammy Tans. Tammy, would you come up? Or do you wanna sit? Absolutely not. Very appropriate. This is Tammy Tans. I call her the angel of Bauer Elementary. So shortly after I was hired, I was noticing how remarkable Tammy was and, and the, the strong work that she did in our building. And then maybe a year or a year and a half after that, unfortunately, her father passed away. And sitting through that service, I learned a lot about Tam because I learned about how she was raised and the values of her family. And things started to be very clear. So when I think of a professional, I think of a person with advanced knowledge or skill. And Mrs. Tans has that in, um, his buckets. She is so su- so smart and so, um, resourceful when it comes to serving, uh, her students in the autism spectrum disorder program. A professional has strict ethical codes and no matter what she's facing in terms of challenges with students, she and her team always behave with the utmost ethics, uh, and discipline to preserve student dignity. Professionals are committed. It is not uncommon for me to spend time at my building on the weekends and always run into Tammy. She stays late. She is very committed to each and every one of the students she serves and families that she serves, but also to the folks that she works with. The parapros in her team, on her team are almost more like teachers than paraprofessionals due to the work and knowledge that she pours into them. Professionals get results. So if you walk into the Bauer Lounge, straight ahead is a big poster and it's Steve Jobs quote. It says, we're here to put a dent in the universe. Otherwise, why even be here? I kind of think of that movie Back to the Future where things that you do can change the future down the road, uh, if you're not careful. And I think every morning we go to work and we have the opportunity with our young people. And Tammy has made a remarkable, uh, unfathomable dent in the universe. She's broken several windows. Uh, not just dents. Um, she has changed kids' lives. And if we don't see it fully when they're there, sometimes we see it down the road when we hear stories of them in other buildings and how they're doing. I think something that's very important for teachers is to love what they do and to love kids. And beyond a shadow of a doubt, Tammy loves children. She loves helping, uh, this population of, of children as well specifically. And I'm just, uh, I'm, I'm very sad. I, I think the, I, I think so highly of Tammy and I will miss her greatly, but, um, I'm thankful to have known her. She is, uh, just one of the best I've ever worked with. And Hudsonville, you know, you don't, you don't see it, but trust me, she's a special person and we will miss her very much. Tammy, congratulations.
All right. This evening I had the opportunity to honor two, uh, my most favorite people. So Renee and Mindy come on here. This is my fifth grade teaching team at Forest Grove Elementary School. They've done this together for ten years. They're amazing. I'm gonna talk really fast because I gotta get through a lot of stuff to say here. So Renee, and they both taught everything, but have specialized especially in the last ten years because we compartmentalized in the fifth grade. So Renee has been our ELA social studies teacher. She is our go-to tech person in the building. If we ever need to have her edit a challenging parent communication, she's the best person to do that. And if you ever need a recommendation of a good book, she's, she's your gal for sure. She started her teaching career in Tokyo, Japan. Um, taught there for a while, went to third grade in Naples, Florida, was hired as a parapro at South Elementary School. Um, there she moved into teaching fifth grade and then she moved to Bauer for almost a decade and then we wooed her to Forest Grove. So the last ten years have been teaching fifth grade, um, at Forest Grove Elementary School. Mindy is our, again, taught everything person, um, but it was our math and science person, um, for fifth grade. And, uh, she is, she is our go-to medical emergency professional. She could be an R N nurse, um, if she wanted to be. She's not phased by anything. So if there's a crisis, you just call Mindy and she comes running. I love that she is a problem solver. So she will always bring things to my attention, but then have potential solutions, which are fantastic. Um, and a growth mindset. So she's taught math pretty doggone good for a long, long time. And then we got a new curriculum. And she's still teaching math pretty doggone good, all right? Even those who aren't, for sure. She started out here in Hudsonville as a long-term sub at Bauer and Park, was hired to teach sixth grade at Park back in the day. Moved to fifth grade when Baldwin Street Middle School was built. We're really aging ourselves here for sure. Um, and then nineteen years ago, moved to Forest Grove. So Mindy helped hire me and I helped hire Renee, which is really cool. So it's kind of a family thing and they're really hard to say no to. So, um, one of the cool, unique things just about to, to bring perspective to communities that they both graduated from Hudsonville High School, which is super, super cool. It's kind of their dream job to be able to teach in Hudsonville. They've done that for a lifetime. Mindy's boy's both graduated from here. Renee's boy will graduate next year from Hudsonville High School. They have made lifelong friends. It's one of the favorite things. When you ask about what do they remember, it's, it's the friendships they've had with the kids that they've been able to serve. And they're buddies, right? So come August, when we start school, they're probably gonna be in a tropical destination someplace feeling sad and yet not so sad. Whatever they're gonna be doing. And future plans, I don't know, but I guarantee we will probably see Mindy doing some private investigator thing on, like, on a reality TV show. And I'm sure Renee will be doing some international tour guide travels to people all over the world. So congratulations.
All right. Hello, everyone. Uh, we have five retirees at Hudsonville High School this year. Uh, I'll start by talking about the one I didn't see here yet, which is Mr. Kurt Elliott. Uh, Kurt has taught earth science, uh, at Hudsonville High School. Um, I met him seven years ago when I, when I came here. He's part of a department that really, um, holds a high bar for excellence. When I think about down that hallway, I see Paxton not in his head. Uh, there's a lot of inspiration. We actually graduate, in my opinion, kind of disproportionate amount of science. Uh, passionate science students, one of them's right here on the board of education. And Kurt has been a consistent, solid part of that team, uh, for a lot of years and he will be well missed by his team. Uh, his friends at the, at High School North Campus now, almost at freshman campus. We kinda call that the north side now. Um, and Kurt's been a steady presence there. He will be deeply missed, uh, by the team at the high school. Uh, and I'll start with another one that's also not here tonight, but his wife is here. To my knowledge, she is not retiring, but she's here tonight. So those of you that maybe saw her and were a little worried. Mrs. Wendy DeSmid is here. Do you wanna come up here for Joe or just you wanna listen to? Why don't you come up?
Practice.
Joe DeSmid is coaching baseball right now. Those of you that know Mr. DeSmid, know he's probably. Uh, I tried to think of one word for each of these. Cause I have five. That's the most of any of the other buildings. So I thought, I wanna, I wanna say one word when I think of quickly off the cuff about each of these. And I, I had Joe DeSmid as, as one of my coaches. He was the assistant varsity basketball coach when I was a student here. And the first thing that I think of when I think of Joe is laughs. Uh, we, we laughed a lot together. Uh, he was pretty young when I was in high school, uh, not that much older than me. And he just had a heart for humor. He had a heart for kids. He was great to connect with. He still loves coaching. Uh, that's where he is again right now, coaching baseball. But he coached baseball, he coached basketball, he's coached golf for a number of years. And he really connects with his students in the school store. So if any of you have ordered gear online, that's Joe, uh, and his organizational skills and connecting with those, uh, student leaders in the building and really making that space their own. So he will be deeply missed by the team. Um, I'm now grateful to call him a friend. So it's been fun, uh, to kind of morph into that. And it's hard not to call him coach. And I'll get to another one of those here very soon. Uh, but I'm gonna miss laughing with Joe. I hope I get to see him a lot. Um, and getting to know his family, especially, uh, his daughter who's graduating this year, uh, in Paxton's class, has just been a real joy. So even though he's not here, let's clap it up for Joe. How about Mrs. Jody Meyer? Come on up. All right. So last night I thought of one word off the cuff and the first word, it was so easy, came to me right away, was love. Uh, Jody Meyer teaches in the PE department where she serves as the department chair. And it was so quick because that's how she serves her students. That's how she serves the department. That's how she serves the school with love. Uh, she exudes it every single day. She makes sure every single one of her students knows that they're loved. They know that they're safe. They have a place. Um, and she's gonna be there, uh, supporting them. She might be challenging them, challenging them too, cause sometimes they need tough love, but she's gonna be in their corner. It's been really an honor to get to work with Jody these last seven years because you get to be friends with people. And you go through things with people. And it's not, you know, we, we have on our shirts that says one family eagles for one of our staff shirts in the, in the year. And it's not just words. It feels real. Um, and Jody's gonna be one that I miss a lot. And the kids are really gonna miss a lot. So I really appreciate her leadership and the love that she exudes for her students every single day. Um, so Jody Meyer. How about Mr. Jason Meyer? Why not? Can we say Jody's better half? No, we can't say. Much like, uh, a lot of things I said with Jody, the first thing that I thought of, because a video just circulated on a text chain about Mr. Meyer. The first word that I thought of was fun. Mr. Meyer has served as an art teacher at Hudsonville High School and the department chair as well. And that worked fun. This was immediate. Uh, the video that I speak of that shows that was a group of our, uh, CI students just dousing Mr. Meyer in the hallway with squirt guns. Because those of you that have ever been in the high school or have students in the high school know that Mr. Meyer will often hide a little squirt bottle and get you as you're going by. Brighten your day. Maybe it annoys you sometimes, but usually it's about bringing the fun. He brings passion to the art world. His room is one of my favorites to visit in the back corner of the high school. It used to be the choir room, if you're familiar with the campus. Because it is a very calm, chill atmosphere that students look forward to going every single hour. Jason, your leadership in the art department has been awesome. I'm gonna miss you personally. And, uh, I mean, we're gonna get a lot more gushy, I think, on the sixth from last day of school. We do this in front of our whole staff. But Jason, you have just brought so much positivity and energy and fun. I don't know how we're gonna, we can't replace you and I'm gonna miss you a lot. So. Okay. Uh, and no offense if you misspoke in the beginning about the year. Am I upset nineteen ninety-seven?
Eight-seven.
Okay. I thought I heard ninety, but it was nineteen eighty-seven. Come on up. Mr. Dave Liddyard. I don't know. First word that I thought of, it's not necessarily fair, was coach. Uh, cause he was my coach, but then I thought, I gotta do better than that. And I thought of integrity. Uh, because Dave, Coach Liddyard, it's weird to call him Dave, I'm gonna be honest. Is someone who I, I believe and I've seen has operated with integrity for thirty-seven years. It's special to me too because my dad hired you in my team, Jason, uh, who was the principal at the time. And I was, uh, able to get to be the quarterback on the team when Dave was coaching as the offensive coordinator. So I have a lot of core, very important memories that Coach Liddyard is a part of. And he has served, uh, in the PE department for a long time. A lot of people think that those of us with educator parents probably go into education because of their moms and dads. It makes sense. Um, but I went into education because of people like Coach Liddyard and Coach Menor and Coach Ter, and guys who were, were there for you when the times were tough. They would challenge you and push you and be role models of how to treat other people and how to operate with excellence and integrity. I know I've told my kids more than once, beyond time early, as I heard them say. And Dave are gonna be really missed. Thirty-seven years. I hope they were enjoyable. It has, has been a real honor to get to work alongside you and be your friend and colleague these last seven years, but I'll always be his host with God.
Uh, so Jamestown Lord is an incredible person and educator. This is Cory. She was unable to be here today for tonight. Cory teaches pre-K. If you know anything about pre-K, it's, it's a monster and it takes a very special person to navigate that world. She makes it look so easy. And I thought to myself, like, what does she do? What are, are those things that makes it look so easy to her? And it was, it popped in my head were, uh, understanding, patience, and relationships. She exhibits such patience with students on a daily basis, whether there's big emotions or struggling with something, or just trying to get the words out because they're excited. Her ability, her understanding, she pulls from all of her professional knowledge and personal knowledge to make sure that she meets the needs of students on an individual basis. So they are seen as an individual and not just another number in the classroom. And then relationships. She forms relationships with students and families so that each family feels like they are one, the only family in her classroom. Like she is the teacher for them. And she does this through constant communication, constant, um, building students up. Having those hard conversations of how you're learning to navigate the world as a five-year-old. Um, and she just does it with such grace and ease. And as we say goodbye to Cory, I found a quote that I felt summed up Cory as an educator perfectly. It's from Aristotle. It says, educating the mind without educating the heart is no education at all. Uh, so we thank Cory for everything that she's done for students in Jamestown and in Hudsonville and wish her the best and all her members. So Matt Bear, principal at Riley. Um, I just took a moment cause I know there's more, but I'm, I, I feel like as all these retirees have been mentioned, that those people have also impacted me and my educational journey, um, from my beginnings of trying to figure out fifth grade visits. Uh, with Mindy and Renee to, uh, sharing a room next to Jason Meyer. And it is chaotic when he starts squirting people. Jody, you exhibit love because that's all you say to people every time is I love you. Um, and you mean it. And that's so great. And Joe was my mentor, DeSmid, and, um, Coach Liddyard was my youth group leader back in the day. And I just, this group of people that's coming up here um, is incredible. Lisa Stuckum too. I know you walked into a lot of things with South Sub too, so I know you're next coming up here. Um, I have the privilege, uh, to talk about Dave Vaucamp. Dave, why don't you join us up here? Um, another man, uh, I think who's made an incredible impact, uh, in our, in our world and our life, and especially at Riley Street Middle School. Dave is thirty-five years. I don't know what the number one song is, but it was nineteen ninety. I'm hoping it was Vanilla Ice. That's gonna be my guess. It was on for six days, but, uh, Dave had eight different principals, lived the gambit of, uh, an elementary teacher moving up, but then kind of coming into this weird, um, middle school idea. Does that transition? Dave, I tried to do the number twenty-nine hundred students. Does that sound accurate? That he's made an impact on from his elementary years, uh, to where he is now. Do you remember all their names?
Sure.
I would say, I, I bet, I bet because his mind is like a steel trap. He actually probably does. Or at least could point at him and say like, I kinda remember where that came from. Uh, in nineteen ninety, we had reel-to-reel film projectors. We had MIMO gra- I don't know if I'm saying that right. MIMO graph machines. Uh, Rizzo copier scanners. I think that's where the word Riz came from. Or that rapper person, Rizzo, or whatever his name is. Uh, overhead projectors, paper grade books. Um, I still remember my mom holding on to that. Now we got Google Docs, ChatGPT, Canva, Securely. Dave, you've mastered them all, correct? We're working on ChatGPT. It was, it was a lot. Nineteen ninety, Hudsonville had six elementaries, K-six. There was one principal on the north end and there was one principal on the south end. That should have been more, but that's okay. Uh, in Jamestown, we didn't have to worry about cell phones apparently because there was only one cellphone and it was on the secretary's desk that was in the hallway. And obviously it wasn't a cellphone. Thank you. Sorry, telephone, because that's where we're at now. Uh, there was a phone tree for anything important like snow days. Uh, and calling up one person who was retired here last year, Matt Tanis, and here in Candy Hibbits were some of Dave's highlights because you knew their expression and the euphoria that they spoke if Candy was up when that snow cull was made. So that was there. Um, so obviously, I mean, the world has changed in thirty-five years. We can all make, uh, ideas of what that is. But I think what hasn't changed is Dave. What hasn't changed is his love of history, his compassion for his students and his integrity that he goes every single day walking down the hall. Which, if you ever walk into Riley Street Middle School, depending on the day, if it's a, uh, uh, one of our advisory days or not, but it will be at the start of second hour. So I'm gonna say nine oh two, Dave will be walking down the hallway with the tiniest little cup to go get his morning espresso. Because it just has to happen. It just has to happen. Uh, Dave, you're, I've, I've had the privilege of, of being in your room so many times, uh, over my thirteen years. And I think your instructional practices are steady, it's student-focused, and it's really a clear understanding of what a middle schooler means. Um, and if there's anyone that can help exact that, it's, it's Dave. He knows what a middle schooler means. You maintain a strong classroom routine, fostered so many respectful relationships with kids and a love, uh, of historical thinking as you've gone through. It's, um, it's just been a remarkable career. Dave, we've just got to witness it. Um, and I thank you for that, for allowing us to witness what impact you've made on kids. So Dave, we're gonna appreciate your legacy of professionalism, your reliability, your commitment to students and colleagues, uh, and your presence in our school community is me so missed. Dave owns a sailboat, so I'm gonna say, I'm voyage.
All right, last but certainly first.
Somebody's gotta be at the bottom of the alphabet.
I also wanna just express my congratulations. I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of you who have been up here, um, in a lot of different ways and just congratulations. Thanks for pulling it to me, um, at first. And this is always wrong to pick out one person, so I apologize, but when somebody spoke about a video that surfaced about Mr. Meyer, what popped into my head was South Elementary Holiday Programs. what popped into my head was South Elementary Holiday Programs, year after year, Brad Nader went. And I told Jay, and I don't know if you remember this, Jay, that when they both retired, they should actually start doing the surgery of school assemblies. Remember when I told you that, Jay? Because they are entertainment value one and all. That's what popped up in my head when I heard the video. I have the privilege to honor Lisa Sticke. I don't know, Anne usually does the math calculations. It does, when I start to hear this, it makes me wonder how many years of collective service this group of people represents. I mean, it's, I don't know.
Just Lisa, Dave, and Dave is a hundred and seven.
It's pretty amazing. Lisa, if I'm rounding numbers here, I believe has been at South Elementary for thirty-eight-ish years. See, I like it, huh, because I'm gonna go ish. An interesting part of Lisa is she also attended South Elementary School as a student. So she is going to win, like, I don't know where the trophy is and where, like, the scoreboard is, but for the most number of years in one building as a student and staff member, Lisa wins. I also wonder, as I start to calculate, Lisa has had a lot of different roles in the district. She served as a first-grade teacher, she has served as a reading teacher back in the days when we were able to have dedicated staff for reading purposes. First-grade teacher again, and then an academic specialist now. And it made me wonder, how many kids would credit their literacy journey to Lisa? And when you think about, like, what are the seminal components of education, literacy is absolutely one of them. And Lisa has worked with hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of kids, many of whom struggled to learn how to read, and that's why they needed extra support. So whether she was in the first-grade classroom with a whole class of kids, or she was huddled in a very small room somewhere with a group of three to five kids cycling through thirty minutes at a time to get these kids the help they needed to be able to walk to the next level of their education and to middle school and high school and beyond to go into the community and to be literate people. Again, I don't know what else is more valuable than that, and it's hundreds. She's also probably going to win the award for working out of the smallest areas of any given building. Her classroom probably felt like a whole city, because most of the offices she's worked in have been very small. She also was one of the people who has traveled from South One to South Two to South Three, and we didn't lose her along the way. She brought all her reading stuff, and she's ready to go. A couple more things about Lisa, she's a leader. So when you think about some of our staff who have grown into who they are as educators, she's not just a teacher, she is a leader. And so she has had a number of people who come to her over years and years and said, hey, I have this one kid, I just can't figure this out for them. Can you help me with that? What should I be doing? Can you come observe? Can you test them? Can you? And Lisa is always ready to help. She's always there. She's up on her research. She's never just sat on the sideline like, oh, I got a couple more years left, this is just gonna be it. And even embracing the role of an academic specialist, that was new to the district a little bit, like, we gotta figure this out. I give her a ton of credit, because it came with a lot of technology, it came with a lot of unknown pieces, and she just kept supporting and leading. She had a number of support staff members as well. Over the years, I think of Ellen and a few other people who, Anne, who have worked alongside her under her leadership and her teamwork. As much as she is the guru of reading in my book, in Hudsonville Public Schools, she's also one of those people that can just step aside and let those other people take on. And so she was already at South, obviously, before I had done her, so part of me being at South is her fault. And I have just watched her be and walk in incredible testimony of what a hard-working, compassionate, knowledgeable staff who's like, through a lot of hard things, too. Her husband, Tom, is here, and I know they probably have some amazing plans. Her kids went through South Elementary School, so we have the privilege of doing that, too, so. I honestly, Diane Keeler retired a couple of years ago, maybe now, and I think I probably said the same thing, like, if anybody is South Elementary, these people are. If anybody embodies South Elementary School, it's Lisa. And so we wish her well with Tom and family. Thank you for everything you've done. And all of the kids who can say amazing things about what you've done, and I'm proud of their leaders. Congratulations.
That's your day, it's a snow day.
So tonight, we, we bring you several retirees. We would ask the board to take action on the retirement, thanking them for their service and watching them walk out the doors, knowing they can stay for the rest of the evening. Hold up, let them vote first.
You know, one of the things I'd like to say is this brief read here. Understand that the talents and abilities that each one of you has can be utilized and should be utilized throughout the rest of your life when you can be very influential in other people's lives outside of your field. So we thank you very much for what you've done, but this is just the beginning of another step, and I encourage you to take advantage of all of your skills and abilities and move it forward. At this point, we will ask for a resolution. We have the certified staff retirees as presented by Anne Armstrong. We have a motion to approve this.
I'll move it.
Okay, Nick, a second. Any discussion?
I gotta make a quick comment for my friend, Dave Liddy. We were in school together.
Yes, we were.
We went to summer science together.
Yes, we did.
And what a lot of people don't know is we sang together.
You did?
Magical.
Yes, my voice is not the same, but I still like to sing.
Yes, and we would sing songs on summer science, and I'm sure they still do that now, but Dave, I, just hard to believe all of you folks that graduated about the same time I did are now moving on. But appreciate everything all of you have done. I know Jay and Jody may be out there, too, and they're such special people to our community. And so thank you, all of you who have been here for so long and dedicated your lives to Hudsonville Public Schools.
I would like to especially recognize David Mills, and his trainer, both of my children had you, and you were awesome, awesome teachers. Yeah, just wonderful, wonderful memories. And I know Lisa Sticke, I don't know you, but I did have your son as a student, and I know you're expecting a little friend. Congratulations, I know what you'll be doing.
Okay, Nick, is there more discussion?
My family was just very impacted by the team at Forest Grammar and also by my uncle. My oldest is passionate about Mr. Mr. Baukamp.
Mr. Baukamp has a beard.
Mr. Baukamp also has a beard, well, he's a beard man.
Cutest thing ever.
Okay, well, at this point, we have a motion to approve the retirement. And they asked, can I, can I oppose? Any opposed? Okay.
Congrats.
Okay, next, we will go to the Park Elementary Bid Recommendations, and I will turn it over to Mr. Briggs.
Exciting to see this shot that's come to an end. As said in the work session, the staff are, several of the people are, other than you, is coming up in one line. It is one line. Recommendation, our team of the board is to, for all of the challenges we're faced with, pay them attention, and child, get five hundred and eighteen dollars in furniture, park elementary.
Is there a nomination for it?
We have the Park County Bid Recommendations for Furniture presented by Patrick Briggs. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, Don, second. Joy, any discussion?
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Next, we will go to the Certification of Graduates for 2025. The following is proposed, and the board approved the attached list of graduates as presented by Jordan Beal, a high school principal. And we have a list of graduates as presented by Jordan Beal, and we have a motion to certify the graduates. Don, second. Andrew, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
A motion passes. Next, we will be going to the Fiber Maintenance Bid Recommendation, and the following resolution is proposed that the board approve the kid recommendation of vice-collective for fiber maintenance services in the amount of ninety-three thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars as presented by Patrick Briggs, Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance.
Yes, it's, it's, it sums up well. This unit was reviewed with the board in the work session, and it was a big. And tech staff, they've got this, I would say, packaged up, so the district can receive up to fifty percent in reimbursement on the services, so that is the recommendation.
Seems like, seems like the people on our acquaintance stated that we're doing this. We have the Fiber Maintenance Bid Recommendation for Fiber Maintenance, as presented by Patrick Briggs. We have a motion to approve. Ken, do we have a second?
I'll support.
Nick, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's been passed. Full motion passes. Okay, now we will go to the Pre-K for positive behavior support intervention, and the following resolution is proposed, that the board approve the attached PBIS lesson example as presented by Mandy Thomas, Assistant Superintendent of Special Services and Special Education.
Thank you to the board for your review. We have to clear that for the student staff. Those lessons are with purpose, so they're just in schools for access and grades pre-K and four, as mentioned during the work session. We use a touchpad of the accident, and that's meant to be a special.
Recommendation.
So we have the PK for PBIS lessons presented by Mandy Thomas. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Ken, or Andrew, seconds, any discussion?
Andrew's called on.
PK, do we, can we look at it for you?
Uh, no, the lesson for kindergarten is where they begin.
Okay, all right.
Any other discussion? Are they all favored?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the resolution passes, motion passes. And next, we have the High School Technology Bid Recommendation, as presented by Patrick Briggs.
Thank you. So this is the end of a process for a simulator to be used for multiple sports, for kids to work on their form, golf, tennis, soccer, but this has, this includes the technology piece as well as some turf infill for a total of two hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars to fabric turf of pollen.
Here we have the High School Technology Bid Recommendation, presented by Patrick Briggs. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Don, do we have a second? Ken, any discussion?
Can you deliver at this point? Remind, you talked about it. It's, it's in a space that we could really work with immediately. And really, I believe, really my question is, components coming from overseas to patent tariffs. Right, the, we will know that when we get, we guarantee, guarantee the contract. So, so the, it looks like right now, we're not gonna have a tariff today, because there's an inventory event that was in the sphere for us, so. Based on the volume, we could go pay basically. It was a substantial volume that definitely built up. There was, there was basically, there was inventory that gets secured. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Here we have the bid into go, on progress, can I take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we'll go to the Chromebook Bid Recommendation, and once again, Pat.
Thank you. So now that we're at one-on-one district, we have to refresh. So this recommendation is, with all our tech work, our tech partners' fine work, so we'll be, this will be a refresh for our fifth and ninth grade students, as well as for Chromebooks, and then for some specials classes in the elementary and middle school, two hundred and seven Apple iPads for a total of three hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Here we have the Chromebook Bid Recommendation, as presented by Pat. Do we have a motion to approve? Support Ken, support Don. Any discussion?
Same question, Pat, really on seven, I'm seven, nine, ten, assuming all those have components, or the system comes from courses, so. And you may not know that right now, but obviously, we're gonna be on the air. Tear them back, and I assume there's enough latitude to come back to the board.
We may have to. I think nine might be okay, but seven and ten definitely might have to. But if we, the sooner we secure some of these items, we can, and we did talk about this, as, just so the board's aware, we talked about this as a technology team and a construction team after the work session. Do we need to secure? We had talked potentially about almost an emergency board meeting to get this done right away, but they said, if we do it tonight, that should be okay, so they feel comfortable, but.
We have allowances built in some of the, some of the recommendations, specifically some listed in the furniture, and then we have allowance built in.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good motion passes. Next, the resolution to hold a hearing for policy fifty-two oh seven anti-bolting.
So our anti-bolting policy is part of the, the Trun change from the Olin to Trun. And part of the legislation is that we need to hold a special hearing for the fifty-two oh seven, which is the anti-bolting policy. So asking the board tonight to hold a special hearing on May eighteenth board meeting. It's actually a work session, but we'll start with a hearing, then a work session, and actually, we'll have an action item, that's a complete item for an ISD issue, so that Monday, the nineteenth, will appear, it'll be an active night. But we'd like to start with a hearing, which will include reviewing the policy, opening up for any public comment, and then the board will discuss the policy during the work session. We'll not vote on it until the June meeting, however, we'd like to hold a hearing for the anti-bolting policy on May nineteenth, so this is the request to. So this is a request to, um, approve that hearing especially.
Okay, so we have a resolution to hold a hearing for the anti-bowling policy on May nineteenth. As recommended by Dr. Vanderkack. Do we have a motion to approve?
Similar.
Don, second? Joy, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, the AED bid recommendation, right Pat?
Thank you. Uh, again, this was reviewed at the point of the work session. Uh, this is staff's great work to come together and replace all the AEDs in the district. So when, uh, they're doing training with staff, everybody can train and create equipment. And when we're doing work to build a building, obviously, of the same equipment. So, become warranties, these are networked, uh, so we can check the battery levels. It's one of the points, maybe with AEDs, the battery will be available. They're kind of plug and play beyond that. But anyways, uh, this, they secured quotes and the recommendation is sixty-nine thousand six hundred seventy dollars.
Here we have the AED bid recommendation as presented by Patrick Briggs. Do we have a motion to approve?
So.
Andrew, second?
Support.
Don? Barb, Barb and Don. Do we have any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Uh, finally, we have the AV package bid recommendation. Go back to Patrick.
Thank you. Um, it's, so the total amount for freedom contracts is one million three hundred seventy-seven thousand three hundred one dollars. That's broken up, uh, into digital age technologies for one million eighty thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars. Moss Telecommunications, one hundred fifty-three thousand five hundred twenty dollars. And Town and Country Electric for one hundred forty-three thousand five hundred seventeen dollars. Uh, Town and Country is, is doing wiring. Um, Digital Age is doing lots. They're doing, uh, eight, um, audio visual systems, uh, projectors, microphones. Uh, they're putting a public address system in South, clocks and timers in South. Moss is, um, doing specifically a, a, oh, pardon me on that. Moss is doing the public address system at South and the clocks and timers in South. So, um, I have totals, those are the totals for the individual contracts. And the total amount is one point three million dollars. That was also reviewed at the work session.
Okay, we have the AV pack, package bid recommendation is presented by Patrick Briggs. Do we have a motion to approve?
Support.
Ken, Andrew, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Before we go to the report items, I just want to say we have quite an extensive list of things that the board had to approve today. And it seems like these are very simple things, but a lot of these are complex items that the staff has made simple for us to be able to look at and review. I want to thank the staff for everything they've done with Dr. Vanderkack in putting all this stuff together so that we can easily look at it and then make good decisions. So thank you very much. At this point, I will turn it over to Dr. Vanderkack for the report.
Alright, there's somebody reporting, but we're gonna start. We have a pack that you can't leave and you're done, so we'll start with Patrick.
Alright. Um, let's see. I'm gonna report on what happened since the last meeting and a report on the, whatever's going on my last six days of school. So, um, we had the opportunity to celebrate the art prize last week. That was really awesome, if you had a chance to swing by. Um, a section in our field house was completely filled with, um, students from all different grade levels. And that was just really awesome to see our districts, um, tailoring in that aspect. Um, as Mr. Reddwell talked about, our drum line had been wrapped enough and doing some amazing things. Science Olympiad, um, at state recently. Our spring sports are starting to wrap up, conferences, uh, conference meets are happening this week and next week for all variety sports. Um, Soon Council and some other students from NHS and just, um, any students who just want to volunteer are hosting a, um, River, Riverbank Run aid stamp at the ten mile mark. On an opportunity to, uh, to aidless runners with refreshments and just be encouraging. It's a, I've been for a number of years and it's a really awesome experience. Uh, we had prom last Saturday. There was a lot of students there and it was always a blast. Um, seeing the prom is fun. It's just really awesome. Sometimes if you look close enough, you can see your teachers kind of dancing in the background. Yeah, school's really wrapping up for seniors especially. AP exams are this week and next week. So, it's kind of awesome to see all of our academic weeks, all the students just wearing their matching shirts. Um, and then, I don't know, I'm just excited for graduation season. We've got a lot of fun stuff planned. That's all.
So it's half, and as you go ahead, no questions, ask questions.
Yeah, we can't leave, yeah, we can't leave without some questions.
What's next, what's next year in the class, Patrick?
Yeah, I'm gonna go to Hope College to do a major in environmental science and secondary education.
It's a ten-year status, your teacher's right now. We're gonna be, my board is, he's gonna hire me. YR's industry.
There we go, yes.
Any other questions for Paxton?
You'll be extremely successful. If she hires you, you're good. He's providing pay. They're gonna like us.
Paxton, on behalf of the district, you have been just a pleasure to watch, sit here and watch grow as a young man. I met you in ninth grade English in Mrs. Skipper's class. I don't know if you remember that.
I do remember.
I walked in and you were there and I believe you and your brother-in-law were in the class. Or at least one other one, I think one other was, and I just remember, I'm like, and then she introduced me, I was like. And then I got to watch you grow up as a young man. Um, and normally, as a superintendent, you don't always get to do that with a student going through the building. You are everywhere, from the review show to the middle school musical to officiating, like you said, the, the track meet yesterday. Um, science, you're, you're everywhere and, and still very successful in the classroom, I think you're doing. So, um, I'm just, we're really proud of you. And, uh, we're looking forward to great things from you in the future. And I know, um, we'll keep track because mom kept on very far. And your sister will keep us updated. We got just a small token of appreciation just to say thanks for all you've done. Um, I know you'll get more than one of these graduates, we'll be posting notes in here just to say thanks for the love of our people. Alright, next up, we have some updates from our buildings. We will start with Miss Stafford's park.
Okay, um, I am, I, we have, um, I want to tell you about the Park Elementary Bike Bus. A bike bus is a biker gang of elementary kids and white kids. And, um, a group of parents pull this together every Friday between spring break and the end of the school year. They're meeting at the library and biking with a huge group of kids to Park Elementary on Friday. And, um, Helen and Bob's Children's Hospital donated, um, helmets for the kids. And parents are stationed in their vests and stop signs at all the intersections. And the kids just go cruising down the street and they roll up to Park with big smiles on their faces and all that. So, they're available tomorrow morning. Take a peek and check it out.
I almost got caught up in the, that's weird. And then a, a deputy came and put on his light as they all made the turn, they were still...
They think they have the right of way.
Safety endeavors, so thank, thank you very much. Uh, next up from James Towne, up, or Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, good evening. Um, so, under penalty of failed threat of our employment futures. Mrs. Armstrong, it is her birthday today, so she might have alluded to how, how quickly we needed to get to meetings and that. Um, so, in elementary, M-Step has sort of ruled everything for the last couple of weeks. Uh, M-Step window ends officially next week. Uh, all buildings end a little differently based on the schedules today. Our last official day, uh, and it has been really successful in it. I love the passion with which the teachers are so invested in getting scores. I, I get the empowerment scores, give those to the teachers. And in the teacher function today, while they're eating, they're analyzing their data and like celebrating successes and like concerned. It's just so great to see the passion of teachers. Uh, and it is Teacher Appreciation Week, and so every week has, or every day this week has been something special. Uh, every day has been food related. I think we probably have a million calories go through our teacher's lunch. And a lot of that has been consumed by non-teachers too. So, it is a great...
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Next up, we have an update from the five-six building, Mrs. Corr.
Alright, good evening. Um, this month is mental health awareness month. And so I just want to give a shout out to our mental health therapists that we have in our buildings. They've played a tremendous impact on our lives of our kids, their families, and I would say even like supporting our staff. And so tonight they had, at the five-six building, they invited families to come. I think they had twenty of the students that they're servicing, their families are coming there, having a big dinner and doing just some different activities with us. So it's super exciting just to have them in our buildings this year and just seeing all the great relationships and how they're connecting with our families in our community that definitely need them the most, so that's been really great. And then we're also in field trip season, so we just sent three hundred and like twenty-some students to camp. It's really stressful as an administrator, not gonna lie. But no one was hurt. And we had, um, one of our families of a student in one of our categorical programs was so nervous about their child going to camp. And very last minute was like, alright, we're, we're, I'm gonna send him, he's gonna be great. And I got these videos of him on the zip line that were amazing. Like he actually like climbed up and he gave it like a little bit, ooh. And then he went down and he was just smiling and all the kids at the end were like cheering for him. And so it was just the best thing, so. Thanks to our teachers, they put in a lot of work to plan for camp, so we appreciate them too. Med bags, they go, like all the things that go, there's just a lot of planning and it's such a great experience for our kids. Sixth grade goes to three mile project next week. We're hoping also for no injuries, not sharing a teacher, her, her ankle and still is suffering from it, so no injuries. Think of us.
Thank you. Last but not least, Mr. Beal.
Yeah, I'll go fast because Paxton gets it in a lot when I just check things off, like I said before, I appreciate that. But did you talk about what we got to do today in the cafeteria?
I did not.
Alright, so, uh, the high school raised, how much money, Pax?
Uh, sixty-three hundred.
Sixty-three hundred dollars. And because of that, for the Milan Miracle Tournament, which is next Saturday, uh, with the baseball field. Something we would do annually to raise money, fight for, against children's cancer. And they raised sixty-three hundred dollars. And so a couple of our staff members had their heads shaved in the cafeteria, so Paxton got to help with that. Uh, I did not volunteer. Um, but Frau Wedge and Mr. Marvin. And it was an interesting cafeteria day today. So, they said if you, if you reach a certain, uh, uh, dollar amount, what did they set it at, just out of curiosity?
Uh, four thousand.
They set it at four thousand, so they soared past that by twenty-seven hundred dollars. And Frau Wedge looked a little bit like G.I. Jane. He works. Uh, so they got to do that for fun, but it was all for a really great cause and they went way past, I think, in large part because that was out there, that they were gonna do that. So, good job, Paxton, and all of the students involved. It's the brave teachers for doing this. Uh, a couple of things just to expand on the high school. It's a really big deal when it's AP testing week this week and next. Uh, we had one of the larger ones today with AP statistics. Uh, tomorrow, some great social studies ones with AP US history in the morning and AP econ in the afternoon. And it's always a big, big deal this week when it hits. And I know Mr. Beamer and Mr. Ray will be out there, they're AP push teachers, uh, riling the kids up and inspiring them with some historical speeches to get ready for the AP test. But it's really a culmination of a lot of really hard work and, and our scholars get to go show what they know. Hopefully get a lot of fours and fives and they're very proud of all the hard work that they put in. So I just wanted to shout out, thank you to teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week, uh, especially AP teachers this week. And then another shout out to Mrs. Andre, um, in the review show. Paxton, you were fantastic in it. It's great to see such talented students up on the stage. That was last week, uh, Thursday and Friday night before prom. And thanks to the board for taking official action. I know we haven't done that in the past around the graduates. Five hundred and fifty graduates this year, largest class in the history of Hudsonville High School. Uh, we're honored to celebrate them on graduation night coming up real fast on the twenty-second, so thank you.
So two weeks from tonight, six P.M. Be early, park like you want to leave because if you park like you want to be in a good spot, you're leaving soon after graduation.
We're staying, enjoying.
The kids certainly do, and I'm totally have a night just like tonight, so thank you, Mr. Redd. Any questions for our elementary, uh, five-six building? Thanks to all of you, and thanks to all of our staff. It is, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, but it's really Staff Appreciation Week. And I know our principals go above and beyond taking care of their staffs. But, and we try to recognize our teachers and support staff and transportation, all of our groups. Uh, but it truly is amazing to watch people in action. I know the board got to spend time in buildings, uh, this week and you really see, uh, what takes place. Most people have no idea, um, all the passion, the work, the blood, sweat and tears that everybody in this room, uh, as well as in the building. So, thanks for all you do. Just have a, a quick update, but I, I've asked our central office team to not have to give an update because I didn't know how long the meeting was gonna open. But I would like anything but a quick update about tomorrow.
Tomorrow is our final early release day of professional learning. At the elementary level, um, they are going to be spending some time for K through fifth grade, K through fifth grade in particular, doing some celebrations. This is our first year of presenting that, and it's also a learning curve for staff. And so leading in with some celebrations as well as trying to, um, process and anticipate second year. We want to just say, okay, we're good, we're done after one year of really our focused learning around that. And so creating some opportunities for them as grade level teams to reflect and think about improvements for next year and next steps in the program. So, um, from a secondary perspective, they, they will have about an hour with building time where principals will be leading, um, their staffs in various professional learning opportunities tomorrow as well as then moving into department time and then collaborative team time. So that's where they're really focusing on revising various aspects of the professional learning communities work. Whether that's the guaranteed environment, critical mass back, refining data, common assessments, et cetera. So, um, those early release days become really critical throughout the year, but certainly as we wrap up the year and anticipate what comes next. That's who we are, the critical that stay in this block too long, and always remember the community is important.
Thank you. Thanks, Mrs. Taylor. It's a lot of work, it's a, it's a team that works hard, administrative work hard with their staff, so it's a lot, so thank you very much. Uh, just one quick update tonight, I sent the board, excuse me, an email this afternoon. Um, had a chance to meet with John Gillette and his staff, because he met with his staff. Uh, and we'd like to celebrate the work that John has done. We're not bringing a retirement to tonight, um, because we're gonna try to change his mind in the next maybe three, four weeks here. Uh, but in June, we will be recommending, or is a, a recommendation of the board to accept John's retirement. And we'll talk much more about John at that point, but, um, just real quick, John, thanks for everything down to the district. We want, many more, uh, things to say about you, um, in our, when we go to our June meeting as the year wraps up, and so forth. So that is our updates for today.
Thank you, Dr. Beal, and Jack, just to take on, on the board, do you guys enjoy?
Really, I've been in the district a lot this last week with the art show and our DAC meeting and getting the go-to forest robe in the admin building. And the teachers are retiring and my son doing, um, APUSH. Um, I'm hearing like all the words from Mr. Ray. And I've just been so impressed with all the people that I have come in contact with and just helped work for the kids. Um, and yet, I'm just so proud to be helping the board of this, this group.
I'm pushed to the end of the year, so thanks all for, for working through it and, um, great job, I heard you were doing. Again, we're across the finish line here, but as AB said, the year never really stops as our teachers are any business. Thanks for all your work.
Yeah, thank you, building principals. It's Teacher Appreciation Week, obviously, but we appreciate you and all your staff and maybe your discipline as well. So thanks for that. Pax, we're gonna miss you. Don't go too far. Paxton and I got to know each other really well last summer on summer science and, uh, you're a special kid and you've got a great future. So thanks for like being on this board. Thanks for what you've done for your, your classmates in this district. You'll be remembered by a lot of people, so thanks for that. And, uh, I don't think I was, I don't think, I think I was traveling last year when we did the retirements last year, so I wasn't at that meeting. I really dislike those retirements, I say this. I sit, when I sit, I mean, I'm proud and happy that they're, you know, moving out of the next chapter. I just looked out in the audience, obviously they're not here now. But I think I had, I had seven of those individuals impact me in some really powerful, meaningful way. And, uh, we're gonna miss them, our students are gonna miss them. I know we have a lot of other teachers that are gonna be coming in behind them, but like, it's people like that that motivate me to do what I do. And, uh, they're gonna be missed, but I wish them well, they're not here anymore, but, uh, glad everyone recognizes them. So thank you all for, for recognizing those teachers and all that you've done, all the work it's appreciated.
End of the year, finish strong and, um, maybe you're right, you're always learning and it pulls me out of my moment. Had the opportunity to spend some time in James Town Upper this, on Tuesday. It was a great experience, just really wonderful, wonderful teachers. And just, I'd also like to thank everyone in the community for helping to pass this special, uh, knowledge for the special, uh, that I don't come up this way. It's a big difference.
Yes, and thank you to the high school and to Heidi for letting me come into your buildings and, and speak to your teachers. And you know, sometimes when I leave it in the morning, I'm thinking, these teachers don't care who I am, they don't care what I have to say. But it always is just amazing to me, some of them, the look on their face like, wow, you actually like stopped at my room and said hello. And one lady at the high school said, you just made my day. And it's like, you know, okay, I was just, I don't know, not thinking right and thinking that it didn't make a difference. But they make such a difference. And so if that's just something little I can do to encourage them, I'm grateful that you gave me an opportunity to do that. And it's a reminder to us as board members, those things do mean something. And so thankfully, um, we've got a setup and I can do that. So thanks, Dr. Vanderjack.
I agree with you, Andrew. I don't really love this night, but it's a celebration and I want to think that the principals, just hearing obviously the, the impact that your staff has made on you and you on them, uh, it, it's really cool to just hear, you can tell the relationships that you have. And it, it just reminded me, you know, uh, I've been fortunate to have people pour into me to, to develop me and one of the, one of the men that's supporting me is like, you should always be looking for somebody to mentor and somebody to mentor you the rest of your life. You should always be looking for that. And I look at the, probably a couple hundred years of institutional knowledge that is leaving, and I know there's more coming. I think there's maybe two more of my former teachers in the district, rough math in my head. We should really be intentional about not letting that knowledge just walk out there. Not only the knowledge, but these are, these are eagles that are walking out the door. And we're all so proud, many of us are graduates here. And I want the next generation and the next generation to have that same passion that, that these staff members do. So thank you, building principals, for, for continuing to instill that. As much as I don't love to see them walk out the door, it does make me extremely proud to be out somebody going nights like this. So thank you all.
Yeah, I had a chance to get into a couple of the buildings this week also, and especially at the elementary level, um, the principals, their personality and, and what they bring to the table, you can see that in all of the staff within that school. And you can see how people respond to leadership. And so I want to thank you for all of your leadership and the things that you've been doing here. I want to thank, thank Dr. Vanderjack for his leadership and, uh, and all the staff. And, uh, just very, very, very impressive, all that you do every day and we, we do appreciate that. And one final thing, as we were talking, Dr. Vanderjack and I were looking at the agenda yesterday and talking, I said, when are we gonna be done? He said, seven thirty, seven thirty-three. Anyway. At this point, I'm going to, uh, uh, ask for a motion to adjourn.
Go back.
Nick, second? Dawn, okay, any discussion? Can you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned.